Good afternoon and welcome to the Bellevue Pre-Council Meeting. Item one, Kay, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mrs. Santiyuk, Mr. Cook, Mr. Knutson.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item two, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item three, additional item, three A, employee years of recognition for July. Ms. Jackson.
Okay, we have a short list this month for July, nonetheless, we want to make sure these employees are recognized. We have one with a 10-year anniversary from our wastewater department, Mr. Glenn Shannon. Glenn, if you'll please come forward, receive your certificate.
Thank you.
And if you can stay standing, we don't let you run away. And then we have an employee, Julia Dinville, from the library with her 15 years of service this year. Either way, and we do have one other employee that was not able to make it today, but I do want to mention him, Jerry Niemeyer, from our street department with his 20th year anniversary, so we'll make sure he gets his certificate. So, thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Berlowitz.
I or staff would entertain questions the council may have.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berlowitz. I appreciate that the chief in the previous report put in the listing of the complaints on fireworks. I think that was good. I also heard from a number of veterans who unfortunately were suffering from PTSD and it's very traumatic for them to be exposed to all of those fireworks. There are some that are still going off. There are, it's, it's, I think, a big problem. I don't know what we can do, but I think we need to look at dealing with the ones still going off, dealing with the ones that are negatively impacting people, the illegal ones. It's, it's an issue, and it especially came to light when I saw the list of complaints that were in the administrators' report. So, I think in appreciation to the leader, they even had an editorial about it. People have written in to the editor. I think we've got some, some people being injured, we had fires, there are just very serious things. So, how can we do it safely and at the same time protect the veterans, protect the animals, and find some way of dealing with it? So, I raise the issue now, and I want to follow up with that with, with the fire chief, the police chief, and whoever else we can work with to come up with something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. Councilwoman Blood, did you have your hand?
I did. I was hoping for a better description of what's going on with the negotiations that you're allowed to talk about, reference to the BPOA. It seems like so many times our negotiations are just really drug out, and it would be nice to kind of have an update so there aren't surprises as we near the end.
All I can really tell you is we exchanged proposals on Friday. So, they're reviewing ours and we're reviewing theirs. We're set to meet, I think, as I indicated in my report, August 7th. So, that's all I have, that's all I can tell you.
And what is the deadline again for?
Their contract expires the end of September.
Okay, so just around the corner?
In essence, two months.
Do you anticipate that we'll meet that deadline?
Well, ideally, I would hope so, but with any negotiation, having just received their proposal, not knowing what they're looking for in terms of contract provisions based upon our proposal, it's just almost impossible to predict. Clearly, our intent is always to have a contract complete by that date, but sometimes contract negotiations become protracted for various reasons. So, in the best of all worlds, so to speak, you would, you'd exchange proposals, meet once, and it'd be done, but, and I won't get into details, but based upon various areas of concern, when I came into this position, several of those have been addressed, some are still need to be addressed, so, and sometimes those can be sticking points. But we're going to do the best we can to, to reach a conclusion as soon as possible.
You know, for me, my biggest concern is that I don't ever want to see staff ever again working without a contract. I know we've had that happen in the past, and, and so I just, I hope that the council continues to be kept in the loop and that we're given time tables exactly when you think things are going to happen, and, and I hope that we're being very prudent.
That's why I've tried to indicate when proposals are exchanged, meeting dates, and also contract expiration dates. Again, our intent from administrative standpoint would not be have people without contracts as well.
Right.
But there's been times where it's been beyond our control. So, to the best extent possible, we will always endeavor to have contracts in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, I have the same question in relation to the BPMA. How long has their contract been expired?
Their contract expired the year before I came, and so I think the last contract was 2009. Am I correct, staff, Rich, on that? And for various reasons, it's drug on longer than we would have liked. Some because we've had issues that have just been difficult to resolve. Also, there's been change in representation during that period of time. Again, with any of the contracts, we've been trying to bring those to conclusion, but there's been some significant hurdles that we're still trying to iron out. I'm hoping that will be resolved soon, but it's, we've also been waiting for some final clarification response in that particular contract from the legal council representing that union, and it's obviously taken longer than we would have liked. So, that probably of any of the unions has been the longest, you might say, in limbo. But again, it's not, contrary to maybe what indications have been made, it's not been based upon management. We've made a very extensive effort, and obviously I'm part of the negotiation team here, and Rich Severson and Karen Jackson. But again, there's been times where we've been responsive, and we've waited, and we've waited, and we've waited for responses, and then pushed to get a response, and then it takes time to work through that. So, long story short, that's another contract. I think I indicated that we had exchanged proposals, we were waiting for a response to our counterproposal, still not received that. Again, would like to move forward with meetings to bring that contract in particular to conclusion, because again, it's, I don't like to have us spin our wheels and you might say expend a considerable amount of time when ideally reaching a conclusion is in the best interest of both the members of the union, our employees, as well as the city. So, we're continuing to make an effort to do so.
Are there any other questions? Okay, moving on to item four, review and discussion without action of items on the agenda of the regular council meeting this evening at 6:00 PM. We begin with item number three on this evening's agenda, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. Item three B, approval of agenda. E, approval of consent agenda. C, approval of minutes of the July 14, 2014 regular meeting of the city council. Item four, approval of claims. Five, none. Six, none. Seven, none. Eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. Eight A, ordinance number 377, 3772. B, ordinance three, oh, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, do we have, in your presentation of this ordinance, you stipulated there may be a future plat, have you had any consideration from the owner of the property as to, what he intends to do with it?
The current owner wants to sell it, so, and he feels that selling it as an RG-50 or residential, for residential development is, is more likely to sell with that zoning designation than with a BN on it. So, it'll be up to a future owner what they want to do with it.
Okay.
Eight B, ordinance 3773. C, ordinance 3774. D, ordinance 3775. E, 3776. And eight F, ordinance number 3777. Moving on to item number nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading. Nine A, ordinance number 3778. Councilwoman Blood.
What is the reasoning that we're being asked to waive the three readings? I'm a little fuzzy on that.
As you can see, that is a compensation ordinance. We, some time ago, did some market research, because city has never really done a true market research before on compensation for positions. By state statute, we are required to work towards comparability, and this ordinance for the positions are not covered under contracts because we're still in the process of negotiating those, would bring our unclassified positions and directors more in line with comparability. And so it's something we have to do, it is a statute, and doing so, to me, it doesn't make sense to waylay things we need to do at the same point in time. That's a staff recommendation. If you choose to do the three readings, we don't have any objection, but it's necessary, like any other statutory compliance item, that we do need to move towards. So, the sooner we act on it, we can get things moving, and for those particular positions, as we negotiate contracts, hopefully we'll be in a position to negotiate and move those positions also towards comparability.
So, when did the council, because I don't remember seeing that research, did it fit in one of our packets?
Actually, let me, I'll address it, Carol. That's one of the executive items, discussion items. That particular research is very confidential and proprietary because it is the basis for ongoing and future, and near-future contract negotiations with the unions. We're talking about wage information, benefits, and so...
Well, that's public information.
No, no, not at this point. It's part of negotiation strategy and negotiation information.
And I'm not trying to be stubborn, I'm trying to clarify this, okay? So, you did a wage comparison.
We did market analysis, yes.
With other communities of our size, not just in Nebraska or only in Nebraska?
We, we had an array of seven cities. They followed the CIR guidelines per LB397, which was enacted two years ago, which also aligns with the Commission on Industrial Relations guidelines, and so, but that forms the basis for not only what's being proposed in this ordinance before you, it also forms the basis for our negotiations with unions on wages, so we know where we're at, wage and benefit in terms of our position. But that's not information you would disclose. That'd be like going into a contract negotiation or litigation and providing information that would be information to represent your client. So, that's not a public document, it's negotiation-based material.
The document may not be public, but the information certainly is, as something that is readily available through any municipality.
No, not comparability at this point. Once we negotiate contracts, then subsequently that information would be different, but that's what we're basing our negotiations upon in terms of, it's no different than a union or any entity doing their own analysis when they go into union.
Right, because it's public information, it's available.
No, you wouldn't, no, you don't disclose that. You disclose that, and basically at that point, you have no ability to negotiate and represent the city's interests.
I hear what you're saying, but you cannot glean that information in the fashion that you're saying unless that information were readily available, because you're telling me that the unions can also get that information.
They could go out.
And I could, as a researcher as well, get that information.
Right, but they would not disclose that information to us unless it was mutually agreed upon to disclose.
Right, they wouldn't show you their hand, but that doesn't mean that it's not public information.
Well, you could go to any of the cities and ask for the information, but we would not provide them our analysis of that information. That's what the study does, it goes through, it collects data, and it does an analysis of where we stand, but you would not give that information out, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm not disagreeing with that part, I'm saying that the information, that the wage information, I mean, Steve, you've been involved with city government, wage information is public information.
But, and, but again, clarifying, someone can come and ask, we publish our wages, like in Nebraska, municipalities are required to, other states probably do so. Anyone can go to the particular city and ask for the information, but we would not divulge our analysis because that's the basis on which, which we negotiate. So, that's very sensitive information.
I hear what you're saying about the analysis.
And that's what the stu, that's what the anal, the market assessment would be, taking data and doing a comparative analysis. That's, that's very critical, that that not be information that we would hand over, because at that point, we would have no ability to negotiate.
And you might pay someone a fairer wage, and that wouldn't necessarily be a good, huh? I mean, that's what I worry.
Well, no, no, you've got to remember that that forms the basis, I mean, when you negotiate, the union or any group would present what they're asking, their proposal, and they may went out and surveyed a different group of cities, I don't know. All I can tell you is our information, if we had to go to the Commission on Industrial Relations, would be something that we would then use to support our case on that, but you don't hand that to, to the other side up front.
And I hear what you're saying. Here's my issue, is that I know later we're going to be asked to go into executive session to discuss this, and my issue is, why didn't we get it before we asked to vote on it, even if it had been an executive session? And I understand not, not showing your hand because you want the upper hand apparently in all the negotiations, but I think some of this information should be public information, and I'm not sure that it's something we should go into executive session on, and I feel bad because I feel like I'm pushed into a corner now because I'm not given the option because you guys set the agenda, and it was, it was added on to the agenda after several people had questions about it. This is information that's really important that we should be given prior to any meeting to vote on something like this, let alone being asked to waive the three readings, and I'm not comfortable with this.
That's the reason why we would go into executive session to review it. Again, it's information that is executive session-type information or different than discussing negotiation or purchase of land or litigation.
On the day of a vote?
Well, that's why it's in advance of when you're going to vote on that. Again, if I were to send this information out, there's no such thing as sending it out to all of you and marking it confidential. Once it's distributed, it's public information.
But you could have, we could have voted on this the next council meeting and had today's executive session to discuss it. What I'm saying is to be given it the same day that we're being asked, because we are not allowed to have it because you're putting it in executive session.
Correct.
It's bad form.
Well, and that's why, indicated with anything, staff make, will make a recommendation from time to time on waiving the three readings.
And I respect that.
That's clearly, it's clearly your purview to go through two readings, three readings, whatever, but at the same point in time, that's why we're doing an exec session, following that, if you don't feel comfortable, you can always choose to do the additional readings. We're just trying to move it along, but again, we're just in a position where we, if we send out certain information, we have no ability to protect that information, that's the problem.
And state statute, and I know which part you're talking about, and Pat can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that we have to do those comparable studies, but we don't necessarily have to, to raise the wages, right?
Well, what you're, again, what you're, the changes you're making are to wage ranges, ranges of pay, which are intended to move us or keep us as, to the degree possible, fiscally doable, within the range of comparability. And so, but that, that's just a statute that says basically that's what we're expected to do. The information we go out and develop in that is something we then use to move towards that goal.
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think I got my opinion out, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Carmichael.
Pat, I'm going to direct this to you with regards to this conversation. I don't know who the comparability study was with, and typically when, when you do studies, you go outside of the states, out of, out of the state of Nebraska to do that, and get towns that are similar size, similar capacity of people, of employees. If we're utilizing and basing a state statute for comparability, is, is it limited to cities in the state of Nebraska, or can that be utilized for cities outside of the state?
The CIR rules state that you are to use Nebraska cities unless they are not cities that, of comparable size and environment. For instance, city of Omaha would probably have to go and look at different states and find comparable cities of its size, but the CIR, our, CIR rules say you do not go out of the state unless there are not comparables that you can use.
Thank you.
Even, I'll probably add to that a little bit. Again, I referred to earlier LB397, which was adopted two years ago by the legislature, which actually codified or, in state statute, some of the guidelines that the CIR has used for many years, it also made some changes to the guidelines in a statutory way that the CIR now has to follow because they used to flip-flop around depending on who was on the commission. Pat's correct, ideally, you try to use in-state cities, but under the new guidelines, you know, it used to be no less than half your size, no more than double, but now it also includes what they refer to as MSAs, metropolitan statistical areas. Clearly, the metro area, you know, if Council Blood would almost be deemed in an MSA because it's in a high-population area. Omaha and the surrounding metro area is deemed to be what's called an MSA, Lincoln's an MSA, and so, and you can only compare with, the size guidelines geographically, but you can only compare if you're in an MSA with one other municipal in the same MSA that you're in. And instead of Nebraska, since we're the third-largest city, that changes the scope immediately, because you can't compare with certain others if those rules weren't necessarily in place. So, yes, we do have to go out of state, and within the guidelines that the CIR has to follow and find those that then meet those parameters. So, you know, if we were like, probably La Vista, Fremont, maybe Hastings, it's much easier to do a market assessment because you don't fall into the MSA restrictions, and you can easily find the in-state cities that meets your size, being at 51-plus. We're kind of like Lincoln and Omaha. There's no one else, it might say locally in the, in our game, so that's why we have to go and find those that definitely would meet the current guidelines.
And just for the public's information, Pat, the Court of Industrial Relations, and maybe even my own benefit, please, is that entity set up to hear disputes between unions and communities?
Yes.
And do exempt employees thus qualify for the same rights under the CIR as a union?
If they're not in the union, they don't necessarily qualify, but I will tell you, as a general rule, most municipalities and counties do a comparability study to figure out what they should be paying their, say, you know, finance director, their so forth. It's, it's not required, it's a general practice, I would say.
Yeah, even though I would add to, though, Pat, that the CIR can hear wage disputes by non-collective bargaining employees. Again, it's, it's, it's not limited specifically to unions. Unions are probably, and, and public entities are the most frequent parties that come before the CIR. However, a group of non-unionized employees, one or two, or a group that are not formally organized, could file a complaint with the CIR. The CIR could agree to hear their case if, in fact, it's not meeting the comparability standards, which really is because in Nebraska, we're a right-to-work state, that's why we have to bargain for wages and benefits. Employees cannot strike, as you know, but also we are required to negotiate working conditions, wages, benefits, and any group of public employees would have the ability to request a, a hearing before the CIR, and the CIR could weigh in on it. It's just not as, nearly as common, but it is possible.
Are there any other questions for nine A? Moving on to item 10, none. Eleven, resolutions. Eleven A, resolution number 2014-21. Item number 12, current business. Twelve A, acknowledge the nomination of the following reappointment to the boards. A1, Ralph Gladback and Morgan Sykes to the Planning Commission for three-year term to August 2017. Two, Ronald Gaspar to the Bellevue Housing Authority for five-year term to July 2019. Three, Ralph Gladback to the Building Board Review for a five-year term to 20, July 2019. Twelve A4, Katie Peterson to the Bellevue Library Advisory Board for a five-year term to June 2019. Twelve B, request to seek bid for a new niche for the cemetery. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Mike Francis if he could explain what we're doing with the niche. Is it a mausoleum? Is it a building just for the cremains? Could you explain what it is that we're wanting to build?
What we're looking at is, right now, currently up in the circle, we have the individual niches, and down in the Scatter Garden area, when we had that established, we had some areas established to build just niches, so it'll just be the individual boxes, basically. It's not going to be a mausoleum or anything like that, it'll probably be four high is what we're looking for, is what we're looking at. So, we're, tentatively, what we've looked at, some earlier plans, it'll, it should be able to hold right around 250 remains, is what we're looking at.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get.
Okay, sorry.
Head around, how long will it last? We're investing this much money, and I just want to make sure we're looking long-term and getting the best value, and I wasn't sure what we were building. You're saying it'll hold about 250 cremation remains?
Yes, that's what, that's what we're looking at right now. If we go, if we go four high, I believe it'll be 250. Before we do anything, I mean, we'll come back, we're just trying to get, we're just asking for approval to go out and get the estimates, and, you know, we'll get a couple of different, different designs with four and five high and figure out how many we'll be able to hold, and then come back and ask for approval, of course.
Okay, and you'll have some assessment of how long, because people seem to be accepting cremation more these days, and even churches are now saying, or the religions are saying it's acceptable, so we may increase what we've done.
Yeah, and we've gone this past year, we've been full, so we've gone this past year without having any open spots for niches, so we've, we've missed out on a year, that's why we're trying to get this done as soon as we can, and get it in as, as soon as we can, as soon as FY15 starts.
And this is a great opportunity, I'm glad you brought that up, because the council has been criticized for not cutting things out of the budget that we could cut out in the past. Why didn't we do it sooner? Why have we allowed these things? Well, this niche, we postponed, it was in the budget, we were supposed to do it, we haven't even been able to sell those in our cemetery because we delayed it. So, when in the budget, we don't do things, sometimes, and many of the times, they catch up to us. So, we've lost those opportunities already, and it was just an easy target, but not necessarily one we really wanted to make.
And this way, we'll be able to do pre-sales too, once we have the design, and we can, we can let the mortuaries know and the funeral homes and that, so.
Good. I look forward to the additional information, so we're looking more long-term.
Yes.
Not just short, but thank you.
No, we're, we're looking long-term.
Good. Thank you, Mike.
Are there any other questions for Mike Francis? All right, moving on to item number 12. C, request to seek bids for the Galvin Road retaining wall replacement project. D, request to seek bids for sidewalk route Van Buren Street to Mission Middle School project. E, approval to purchase a... E, Approval to Purchase a Tyoka Special Concrete Restroom Building for Hastings Banner Park. Mr. Carmichael.
Jeff, I'm going to direct this to you, please. The, the ADA concerns me here, this bathroom will be handicapped, excuse me, handicapped accessible?
I'm gonna go ahead and let Mike answer, he's got the specifications on it.
Yes, sir, it is handicap accessible. Where we're going to locate it, once it's in, we will make sure that the sidewalk and everything that'll be put in is handicap accessible, since we are using the CDBG funds for this, that is a requirement.
And the bathroom by design is completely accessible?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, second question with regards to that, Mike, and I don't know this. I know that when we do building code, or do buildings, and we do compliance and building codes, we have minimum plumbing facility requirements. Is there any national standard that talks about per square foot of open parkland, you have to provide a minimum amount of bathrooms for the public's use?
Not that I've seen, and not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I couldn't find one, that's why I asked.
No, understand, no, not, not that I've seen with an RPA or anything like that, I've never seen any guidelines like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
12F, Approval of the Inter-local Agreement Between the City and Sarpy County to Purchase and Implement City Works Software. G, Approval of New Promissory Note for the TIF Funding. And I will step away on this one, if anyone has any questions. H, Approved Documents to Release the City's Lean and Cancel Promissory Notes Securing Loan to Mr. Video Inc. and MVP Properties. And 1, Request to Reconvey. 2, Substitution of Trustee. 3, Deed of Reconvenience. Takes us back to the pre-council agenda. To item number 5, Executive Session. I will need a motion to go into executive session.
I have a question for Pat. Pat, if, if we would like to suggest that we not discuss one of the things in executive session, and can I make the motion excluding one of the items, and then if either it gets voted on or it doesn't, and...
You make a, I think I know where you're going.
Yeah.
I think you can make a motion to take care of 1, 2, and 3, and we'll see if anybody amend your motion or otherwise.
Okay. So, Mayor, for the protection of the public interest, I move to go into an executive session to discuss real estate negotiations for city properties located 2216, 2218 Franklin Street, and 210, 204 West Mission Avenue, negotiations on the convention slash conference center, and negotiate auditing contracts.
I'll need a second.
I'll make a second, just for the sake of discussion.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Carol, I really do want to talk about this in executive session, only because of the enormity of what's before us. And I think, if for no other reason, we need to have that discussion frankly and honestly as a council.
I would not disagree with that. My concern is that since we really don't even know quite exactly what we're discussing, we have a framework of it, my concern is that some of it should have been discussed in a public forum. And so although I know which way this is going to go, I wanted to make sure that I went on record that I have concerns about this going into an executive session, and that if it does go into an area where I feel we should need to be more transparent and need to be more public, then I will excuse myself from executive session.
And I don't disagree with you in what I over, it's, it should be in the public forum.
Obviously, the motion dies.
Well, let me, let me ask if there's any, any further discussion?
He seconded.
That's all right. Was second, we are in discussion. Mr. Preister.
I agree with the discussion. I agree that it's important to keep as much public as we can. However, in this case, I agree, we don't know what information we may need to keep public and what should be private. And in this case, I would like to make a motion to add that last item to the previous motion, so that everything listed currently would be discussed in the executive session.
So we'd add item number 4, Report and Discussion of Wage Comparability Data.
Second.
And we have a second. Mr. Knutson? Any further discussion?
I just want to make one comment.
Mr. Sullivan?
I just want, I appreciate from the standpoint of trying to be transparent and keep these things out, but from our negotiating position and trying to negotiate these things, if all, if our cards are put on the table, it makes for a very difficult situation. It's, it would not be unusual to discuss this type of matter in executive session.
Any further discussion? Mr. Carmichael.
Okay, because I'm kind of young at this. Do we have to vote on the original motion for Carol, before we vote on the amendment by Don?
We're gonna vote on the amendment first, and if the amendment passes, then we're gonna vote on Carol's motion as amended.
Okay, thank you.
So, the first one we vote on is as amended?
Is the amended, the amendment, if you want to add the amendment.
So please vote.
Amendment.
And in this amendment, we would have everything. So if someone really wanted it to be public, they could vote no. But if you want to add everything, and first, we discuss it in the executive session, so we know where we stand and what we're comfortable with, I think then you vote yes.
Please vote. The vote is 3 to 1. We have enough votes.
I think that passes it, just a minute.
Yeah, you need to vote. Pat's checking to see if this passes.
Affirmative vote of not less than one-half we have, and so we're okay. It passes. So now you, you will vote on the, the full motion now to hear everything.
Right.
Full motion what?
To your motion as amended with Don's addition. So you're basically voting on hearing all four matters in executive session, huh?
Please vote. And the vote is 3 to 1. Motion carries. So now we go into executive session. It is 2:07. We will go into executive session, where our discussions will be restricted to what was stated in the motion. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting for Monday, July 28, 2014. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by Pastor Troy Adams, Heartland Baptist Church, 312 West 20th Avenue, Bellevue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's pray. Father, we are so thankful to be here this evening, and Lord, we are incredibly grateful for this country. Well, we know that there are many countries across the world that will not have a forum like this, that will not have leadership like this, and we don't take it for granted, and we thank you for it. And Lord, this evening, we want to thank you for those brave men and women who are serving you right now to keep our freedoms intact. I pray, Lord, that you would keep them safe, that you protect them, and Lord, that you give them strength to fight well and represent this country the way that it deserves to be represented. And Lord, this evening, I pray for each man and woman that has surrendered themselves to serve this great town. Lord, I pray that you'll give them discernment and wisdom as they wade through the issues at hand. I pray, Lord, that the things that are said and done in this room would honor you. And so, Lord, we just commit this time into your hands. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to have a forum of this nature, and we pray all of these things in the name that is above all names, in the only name that saves, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Adams. Item number 2, Kate, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmi, Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mrs. Sanyuk, Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Knutson.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
This meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, posted the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, Approval of Minutes and Advisory Committee Reports. 3A, Approval of Agenda. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Blood, second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, Approval of Consent Agenda. Mr. Preister.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A second by Mr. Carmichael. Discussion, Mr. Cook.
Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to have item 12E removed from consent, and just have a regular vote on it.
It's automatically removed, then, and onto the regular agenda, you can still vote.
Any other discussion concerns? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C, Approval of Minutes of the July 14, 2014 Regular Meeting of the City Council.
It's under consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's under consent. Also, number 4 is under consent, item 5, none, 6, none, 7, none. Onto item number 8, Ordinance for Public Hearing, Second Reading. 8A, Ordinance Number 3772. Kate, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Number 3772. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 25th Street between Rose Lane Road and Virginia Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
The purpose of our request is to make the property more marketable. We met with the planning department and came up with the, the change that's being requested to, to permit residential zone, residential use, as opposed to neighborhood business, which is not, it's really a marketing thing.
Any questions from the council? See none, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Are there others?
I'm Vicki Lankis, and I live at 2527 Rose Lane Road, which is just south of this area. And I understand that they're going to put apartments or, what, duplexes, something in there. And my whole concern for that area mainly is the traffic on 25th Street, because you're going to extend Rose Lane Road now, so that it will go on to the other side of 25th. And when you come out of Rose Lane Road, going on to 25th, looking north, or if you turn north, it goes uphill slightly, and you can't see now to turn left, the car's coming over. There's such a short distance between Rose Lane Road and Virginia Street. Now you're going to put these in with access, in and out. I don't know if there's room for a turnout or whatever. And oftentimes, we can't even get into Rose Lane Road because it's so narrow, and with the parking on one side, a car, if a car is coming down, sometimes you have to circle the block or go out and use Cedar Island. It just isn't, there isn't room for more traffic there. And the houses in that area, it seems like each addition that you put in, the houses become smaller and closer together, and it just becomes more of a rental-type property rather than homeowners, and some of these aren't keeping them up at all. So that's my concern for the area. I've been there for 45 years, and that used to be a residential area. And then they zoned it for commercial because they said, oh, you can't build anything there. There's springs down there that feed Gilmore Lake and the high wires up there. So instead, we'll give you a dump, and then when we close it, we'll put a golf course and a park there. Well, none of that has come to fruition. Now we have City Works there, the golf course went down to Cornhusker, the parks on the other side of the landfill. I mean, it's just, everything that has been stated hasn't been done. So I'm just kind of concerned what's going in there now.
Thank you, Mr. Lankis. Are there others who'd like to speak on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be Monday, August 11. 8A, 8B, Ordinance Number 3773. Kate, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Number 3773. An ordinance to amend Section 5.17, Ordinance Number 3619, the Bellevue Zoning Ordinance, related, excuse me, relating to planned unit developments. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 3773, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be Monday, August 11. 8C, Ordinance Number 3774. Kate, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Number 3774. An ordinance to amend Section 2.22, Ordinance Number 3619, Bellevue Zoning Ordinance, relating to definitions. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item, number 3774.
My name is Steve Draper, I live at 9807 South 24th Street in Bellevue. I, I reviewed the documents that are for this ordinance, actually, this one and the next one. I don't see a lot of difference between these two ordinances, other than the first one saying, we're gonna redefine what a triangle is, and then I think the next one is talking about, we're gonna apply it to corner lots. I think that's what the difference is, but I don't, couldn't really perceive that much of a difference. In any case, and then there was a, in, you have the same drawings in your packets, showing what the difference would be between having a 60-foot and a 30-foot. The difference, this is the, as it reads currently, which is on, does the 60-foot, but it does it from the property line. And I guess the purpose of this drawing was to show that a home situated here wouldn't be able to do any fencing until we got to here or here. And they're proposing to change it to 30 feet, but not from the property line, extend it out to the curb. And so the difference here is really 42, 42 feet total difference between the old ordinance and the, and the current distance. And 42 feet is about two car lengths. So if you, if you, if you do the ordinance the way it's written, which is this drawing here, you're only gonna have about one and a half to two feet car lengths of visibility around the corner. And that's fine if you got cars sitting there parked apart, but if you have cars moving, that doesn't give, in my mind, sufficient reaction time if cars... if cars are coming that close, and that's all the further that you can see. Under the, under the previous order, when it was thirty feet from the property line, that did a good thing, when it was that way, because it precluded people from having their whole front yards fenced in. And I'm, you know, I live, I live in Green Meadows, and that's the way it's been ever since I, you know, we moved in there. You couldn't have your whole front yard fenced in because of the ordinance, the way it read. And so, I urge you, I understand the rationale for saying, let's, let's move it back from sixty to thirty feet. And I agree, that's probably reasonable. But let's not move it out to the curb line as well. Let's keep it at the property line, and I think that will be a much safer solution than the way the ordinance currently reads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Are there others who'd like to speak on this item? Three, seven, seven, four. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be Monday, August eleventh. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I completely concur with you, Mr. Draper. I think that's a, when I, when I enforced the ordinance in the early eighties and nineties, it was twenty feet from the property line, each, each dimension. And nothing, there's still provisions in the, in the code that provide that nothing can be put in the public right-of-way, which provides inconsistent use of the same. No rocks, technically no brick mailboxes, no plantings of vegetation that would obstruct sight, especially at a corner. And I think that's really important, especially as Mr. Draper has so eloquently stated. You've got vehicles that come up, and if you can't see the oncoming traffic, that setback from the curb only gives you about a five-foot dimension that you don't have to comply, or you don't have to do anything in. Outside of that, you could. And we're going to create a problem for our residents, in my opinion, by approving it as written. I would agree with Mr. Draper, that it should be thirty or twenty feet, as it used to be, measured from the property line, not the curb.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I share the same concern about visibility, and being able to see around corners, children riding bicycles, cars stopping. I am less concerned about where we measure from, as the line of sight and the distance. If we're going to reduce it down this greatly, then that's my issue with it. If you're going to measure from the curb, or from the property line, I still want to see that amount of distance, pretty much what we have now, in the existing scenario. So, if there's a valid reason for moving a measurement to the curb, let's get a greater distance than what we've got here, because I am concerned about safety, visibility, and potential accidents that can happen. So, as, as it's currently drafted, I can't support it.
Mr. Knutson.
I was just wondering if Mr. Shuchek has something he'd like to say on this.
This is similar to the ordinance that was in effect prior to the adoption of the revised zoning ordinance. I can, I'll talk with Jeff and Dean in the next two weeks, and look at, I'll say, the engineering of where you, of the suggestions, as far as down, on the property line, on the curb, and how far back, and provide you some additional information prior to the next council meeting.
Thank you. Are there others? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item number D, eight D, ordinance number three, seven, seven, five. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three, seven, seven, five. An ordinance to amend section nine point oh nine, ordinance number three, six, one, nine, the Bellevue zoning ordinance, relating to fences. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on item number three, seven, seven, five. Ordinance number three, seven, seven, five. Those that would like to speak, please do so at this time.
Again, I, I don't see the difference between this ordinance and the previous ordinance we just talked about. And I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't see why we need, why do we need two different ordinances? Why can't we just incorporate this all into the previous ordinance? That's my, my comment on that. Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Mr. Shuchek, would you be so kind as to explain why it's in two different ordinances?
The amendment that we're adding specifically refers to fences, and there's a section, several other paragraphs, sections of the zoning ordinance that refers to fences, and where they can go, and where they might be set back. So, this just, it does add it in another location, but it'd be in the location where people were looking for regulations regarding fences. And, and if you do make changes to the previous ordinance, they would also need to apply to this ordinance as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Eight E, ordinance number three, seven, seven, six. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three, seven, seven, six. An ordinance to amend section five point one two, ordinance number three, six, one, nine, the Bellevue zoning ordinance, relating to the RG fifty, General Residential Zoning District. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The second and final reading will also be Monday, August the eleventh.
Third.
August third. Third, third and final reading, August eleventh. Eight F, ordinance number three, seven, seven, seven. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three, seven, seven, seven. An ordinance to amend section seven dash twenty-four, ordinance number three, seven, oh, four, the subdivision ordinance, relating to the Park Development Fund. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number three, seven, 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 please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Sullivan.
Counsel, I just wanted you to be advised, you might get some kickback from developers on this. Typically, that was paid through the SID, and so now it's been shifted over to the developer actually paying in the fund. Couple reasons why that was done. The bond council has said that those warrants cannot be transferable, because we, if it goes into the park fund, and there's not an immediate or adjacent park that those funds are going to, then he will not allow that to be passed on to a third party, and buy our interest out, in a sense. So, what we've done is, we've held on to those for five years, and then there's a bonding process, instead of warrants, it goes to bonds, and the bonds fix all irregularities, so then they give us the money after five years. And we do get interest on it, it's about seven percent, but there's been some questions as to the legality of it. And this would also allow us to get our funds sooner. And then, the other issue is, you're always concerned that you're going to, you don't want to be inconsistent, or have higher expenses here than if you're in Papillion, or Omaha, or whatever, and stand out on a pedestal yourself, I guess, or on a limb yourself, with having fees that other cities don't require. This has been the trend in the cities, they're going to, making the developer pay. They'd rather pay it with SID funds, but that's essentially why we're putting that in there, is the money gets there faster, resolves any legal issue that the bond council has.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Moving on to item nine, ordinance for induction, first reading. Nine A, ordinance number three, seven, seven, A. Eight, Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three, seven, seven, eight. An ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number three, six, nine, five, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Councilman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I know that we're, we are being requested that we suspend the rules, but as I've talked about with other council members, and in the public forum earlier, I think that this is something that we need to make sure that the community has an opportunity to speak on, and is informed of. I think trying to rush it through is a mistake. And for me personally, and I can't speak on behalf of other council members, I can't look at someone's interpretation of research. I need to see the actual research before I can make decisions. I don't think it's appropriate to have staff give us, again, their interpretation of the comparable research that we're required to do under state statute, and I'm aware of that. And I'm not saying that staff is not competent. What I'm saying is, is that these are important decisions that I make on behalf of taxpayers, and I'm not willing to make these decisions unless I have every scrap of information in front of me. Administration's already agreed to allow me to come up to their office and look at it, and, and that's what I would expect to do, because we didn't gather that information in executive session, unfortunately, and frankly, now, to be real frank, I don't think we need to go into executive session to discuss it this afternoon, because we got the same information that's in the packet. And I, I fear that we shouldn't have done that. But most importantly, is I think there's going to be a lot of confusion. I think there's going to be a lot of misinformation on the streets, because some people just prefer to misinform people. And I think that anything has to do with tax dollars, it's going to, people are going to want the opportunity to speak on it. And so, I, and I pretty well get the gist that most of the council members feel the same way about not rushing through this tonight. So, I just wanted to say, so it goes into the minutes, that I'm against doing all three readings tonight.
We need a motion?
No.
Okay. Following agreement, we'll move on to item number ten. None. Eleven, resolutions. Eleven A, resolution number twenty-fourteen dash twenty-one, CDVG, twenty-fourteen, twenty-eighteen, Consolidated Plan, and the twenty-fourteen Action Plan, including the fiscal year fourteen allocation. Mr. Knutson.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero one four dash two one.
Second. Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? Mr. Cook.
Mayor, I just want to make a comment real quick. I attended the, one of the meetings around the CDVG meeting, and have talked to our coordinator on this a couple times, and gotten a lot of information. And I'm going to have, I'm not going to be able to support it because of the splash pad. The city of Bellevue did an aquatic study, I think we spent thirty or forty thousand dollars, and I don't see anywhere in there that shows that there's a need for a water facility in that part of the city. I think we, I think we have other options. I think what I've been told, Gilbert Pool is in the CDVG, and this aquatic study identified two options for us. And one of them was to fix the problems with our pools, which would include heavy water loss, and issues pertaining to Americans with disabilities. And Gilbert Pool would have a substantial cost to get that back into compliance, and that was one of the options. Another option was to maybe knock down some of these pools, and build a splash pad. And I'm not here tonight to support knocking down a pool, because I'd want public input before any of that would move forward. But I think we have an opportunity here to use a significant amount of CDVG money to get Gilbert Pool into compliance, along with maybe, it would have to be some city money, probably from our Community Betterment Fund. But I just think that the city needs to take this study that we had done, and knock off, check off one of the things that needs to be done on it, and this is a great opportunity to get Gilbert Pool back into compliance. Also, part of my concern is, is during the study that we had, we were given the service area of each pool, and that was about a mile of a circle around each pool. And this splash pad would be in the service area for the Sun Valley Pool in Caspen Park. Again, I don't think this area needs it. If we want to put a water park, a water facility in the city, we need to put it where it's needed, and where it would be better located to serve truly the residents of Bellevue. So, even though I agree with the other things that this is going to finance, I, since we're going to vote as a package, I want to vote no, because of the splash pad. I don't think it's appropriate, and I think we should take our aquatic study, and we need to follow the recommendations within it. Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. In due respect to Councilman Cook's opinion, I have a different opinion. Representing that area, and as we heard tonight from one testifier, sometimes cities promise things and don't come through. That area has been underserved, it has not had a swimming pool, it has not had facilities, even though a neighboring neighborhood does have one. The only access that you can get is to leave that entire neighborhood, there's no access into it from the west, there's no access into it from the south or the north. You can only enter from one direction, and that's from the east. If you want to go to a neighboring pool, you have to go more than a mile, because as the crow flies, you can get there, but there's a creek that divides the two neighborhoods. So, it's not easily accessible, it's not easy for kids to get over there, and generally, parents have to drive them. That area finally got a cornfield for a park, and that cornfield has slowly, very slowly, been turned into a park. There are some soccer fields, and a couple of baseball fields. But other than that, and now a nice track, we finally, through some grant funds that the Tree Board in Green Bellevue did, have a hundred trees that are planted around the walking trail and the areas, so people can finally get some shade in the area. But essentially, it's been a cornfield that we haven't had the funds to develop. Those people were promised a park many years ago. This is finally beginning to give some service to a part of our community that some people are still claiming isn't even in Bellevue. And then, when they understand that it's annexed and is in Bellevue, they still say, but that's really South Omaha. Now, I can understand that, having grown up and lived in the area, it does seem more like South Omaha, because many of those people settled in the area. But it is Bellevue. Bellevue does have a responsibility to it. This is finally an attempt to bring something nice for the young children that live in that area, and I applaud our CDVG volunteers who served on the committee, and looked at this, and made the determination, and after your testifying before them, even waited, and reassessed, and looked more carefully. And they then came back with this recommendation. I think in fairness to people, when the city makes promises, the city should keep those promises. And although they didn't specifically promise a splash pad, they promised a nice park. And I think we should finally deliver to a part of the city that's way underserved. And each of us should be city council members, not ward members, so I would say the same about any other part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blood.
Well, and I think, Councilman Cook, that this is the beginning of a good trend for Bellevue. We've all talked amongst ourselves about how we need a betterment funds could help us serve other parts of Bellevue, but we purposely assigned a committee of people that were not on the council, people that were, that did not have biased opinions, that were really, were neutral members of our community, and we have to respect the research and the opinions that they gave, as well as the expertise of Abby, our CDVG person, who, who knows what she's doing, and is very competent. And I, I know, what I hear you saying is it's kind of an end-all, and I think it's really more of a beginning-all. We're serving an underserved area, maybe Ron Ptech will give us an A in the Bellevue leader, because we're giving him some love in his part of the community, but beyond, and that's not how come I make my decisions. Still love Ron Ptech, anyway. But it's, it's the start of something big. It's going to show that we can be successful, do a splash pad, and then maybe we can partner with the Babbitts, and do a splash pad elsewhere, and then another one, and another one, and splash pads are more, are more affordable than pools. And I'm saying, I'm not saying get rid of our pools, but if we can save some money by doing splash pads, and the pools that we want to save, we'll have the money to save. So, it, I think it's, I don't think it's the end of something, I think it's the beginning of something really exciting.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, I've thought a lot about this, this entire issue. Thank you, Mayor. I've, I've thought a lot about this, this entire issue, since we put this on the agenda, and I'm going to support it. I agree with Paul. You know, Gilbert Park is one of those areas, as is the Sun Valley or the Northwest area, that CDVG grants can be utilized in. I'm concerned about Sidney Pool. I'm terribly concerned about Southwest Bellevue, that has no access to this kind of recreational use. And we cannot use that, that pool of monies to even attempt to offer something to the children down there. I'm a big proponent of pools because I think pools serve an older age group. I think splash pads serve an under, a younger group of children. So, I agree with you, Carol. I think this is a beginning, and I think as a council and as a city, we need to move forward with the recreational opportunities we provide to our citizens, especially our children.
Any other discussion? See none? Please vote.
The vote is four to one. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, current business. 12A is under consent, B consent, C consent, 12D consent. Item 12E has been pulled. 12E, approval to purchase a Tioga special concrete restroom building for Hastings Banner Park using CDVG funds in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Cook.
Well, before we make a motion, I will support this because I guess now we're going to put a splash pad there.
I'll second that.
So, you have a motion by Mr. Cook. Was that a motion?
I think he said he would.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a Tioga special concrete restaurant building for Hastings Banner Park using CDVG funds in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And a second by Mr. Carmichael.
Seven.
Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12F, approval of the inter-local agreement between the city and Sarpy County to purchase and implement city work software in the amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars plus a yearly license fee of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars split between the city and Sarpy County for assessed management software with a focus on public works operation. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the inter-local agreement between the city of Bellevue and Sarpy County to purchase and implement city work software in the amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars plus a yearly license fee of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, which will be split between the city of, the city of Bellevue and Sarpy County for asset management software with a focus on public works operations. And I believe it's also going to be funded through a grant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12G, before we, we move on to 12G, I will remove myself because I have an interest in item 12G. And I have signed an ADC form with our city attorney, but I will remove myself from the room at this time.
But we need to make the motion first.
No, she could just leave. And typically, what would happen is President of the Council would take over the meeting and be, excuse me, since Ms. Saneuk isn't here, we need to have somebody make a motion to have somebody act as presiding president of the council for this one item.
I'd like to make a motion to have the Honorable Don Preister serve as our temporary council president.
Second.
Thank you for the confidence. And at this time, we have the issue before us. Is there anybody here? I guess we should open the public hearing.
There's not a public hearing.
Ah, we haven't even done that yet, so I will start. The item is 12G, approval of a new promissory note for the TIF, TIF funding of Richmont Terrace redevelopment project. And I would ask the city attorney if he would introduce it first.
Let me try to explain a little bit what we're doing. The promissory note is with Sarco, which is the parent company for Richmont Village, of which both the mayor and her husband are stockholders and own that company. This project has actually started many years ago, even prior to the mayor being the mayor. And the way that it has been structured, it's been structured in tiers, that we've only been issuing the TIF financing notes as phases got done. The advantage of doing that is you don't have interest running during the several years prior to, to different phases getting done. The next phase that needed to be completed has been completed. So, what was left on the promissory note that was in existence has been added to the additional amount that would be in this promissory note. So, we, in a sense, eliminating one and bringing up, I think this is the third phase, actually, and then bringing, carrying over the balance from the previous note. So, it was all part of the redevelopment plan in the first place. It's just Sanders had to build the buildings before we'd give him the note, and that's how it works.
Thank you for that. Any questions from any of the council members? Because the mayor recused herself, and because it is something that people may scrutinize more, is there anybody here who would have an interest in even speaking on this? Wait just a minute, Mr. Draper. We haven't opened anything up yet.
Before we would do that, we would have to have a motion. So, I just wanted to get a sense of even if anybody did.
I'll make a, I'd like to make a motion that we open it for public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Cook, second by Councilman Knudsen. Any questions? Discussion? Please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
We now have a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to ask a question or make a comment, please come forward, state and sign your name, and present your information.
I'm Steve Draper. I've already signed in. My only question is, I don't have a sense of how much money we're talking about here. I didn't see that talked about at all. If you could just lighten us on how much money we're talking about, I'd appreciate it.
Councilwoman Blood, or, yeah.
That's me, yeah. I see Mr. Sanders is sitting in the audience. If he would feel comfortable doing that, I think he'd be the most appropriate person to answer those questions. Are you comfortable with that? Go right to the horse's mouth and...
Rick Sanders, 507 Martin Drive North, and the developer of the Richmont Terrace area, Richmont Village area, also the husband of the mayor. Yeah, the project was started in 2001. It was designed in phases. The first phase was Richmont Village, and there was about three hundred thousand in TIF authorized for that project, which now has a valuation of about six million dollars. The second phase was Villas. Out there, we have ten condominiums for seniors. Not all of those were TIF, but there was a small TIF portion on part of those. And then, the, the third phase was, was Richmont Point, which is a strip center there on the corner. It's just thirteen acres on the southwest corner of Fort Crook Road and Cornhusker. The last phase is two projects, really. One is Richmont Terrace, and that's a large project that we're breaking ground on right now. The TIF amount on that project is two-hundred-and-twelve thousand four hundred dollars. That's about a twelve million dollar construction project. So, that TIF amount is about one and a half percent or a little more of the value of that project, which is very low. The last phase will be Richmont Point Two, which will be another office medical strip center, sitting next to Richmont Point One. The total TIF on those two projects is three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, which is what the, the amount of the new note is. And the good thing about that is, you know, that's money that has already been paid in, in taxes by those buildings there. So, there's no money, there's no tax money that's being accumulated any longer. Those funds have been sitting at the county's office, and they're TIF-funded for a little over two years. And the taxes on the existing buildings have been going to the taxing entities, so it's sort of self-paid now. We, when we TIF this, we just TIF the dirt work, which we're about to finish on, on Richmont Terrace. So, we'll need to fund that note soon.
Mrs. Blood.
I always like to simplify things. So, basically, you're back on the tax rolls.
Yeah, has been for a couple of years.
And I think that's what needs to be clarified.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Then I close the public hearing. Would entertain Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knudsen. Please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Motion passes, and the mayor returns, and I turn over the chair back to her.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. 12H is under consent. Takes us to item number 13, Republic Request to be Heard. I'd like to make a statement before we have the public request to be heard on item number 13, Public Request to be Heard, of what it is and what it is not. It is not to discredit the council or the managers of the city. It is not to be used as a political, personal promotion for your personal gain. It is to inform, support, assist, and for us to work as a team to continue to make Bellevue a great place to live, work, and yes, play. Information on who represents your ward is available. Your council and our city staff are here to give you information. Our website, Facebook, and yes, Twitter, is available also for that information. Please feel free to contact us with concerns before the council meeting, so the discussion with a resolution, which is the way our system has been designed and does work. All of us here this evening are here for the same reason, for the success of this city. Thank you. As a member of the public addressing the council, the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states, "Any statement made during the city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impotent, or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official, or an employee, or a member of the general public," and City Code Section 2-68 regarding the matters of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
Now, Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. And keep hearing more and more rules all the time for me. All the times I've spoken here, I know the attorney at one time said that it wasn't supposed to be response, but four times now, people have responded after I spoke. And so, you've, you've been breaking the rules, but you won't allow me to respond back. So, as far as I'm concerned, if you're going to break the rules and let somebody speak after I speak, one was a councilperson, and then it was three appointed officials, one, one of them spoke twice. So, you know, let's have the rules for both sides if you want to do that. The other thing is just, I happened to notice before, but when I came in the door, the, you don't have on the, on the marquee out there anymore about when the city council meetings are, or when the, or when the, the planning commission meetings are. And usually, you had the date and the time. Now, you just have city council, six o'clock. So, you might want to encourage, put that correctly so that people might want to come down and speak. The other thing that I, certainly you know, I've talked about many times about how I feel about how the finances are handled here in this city. What I did last week, I had, I went to Papillion City Office, and what they did, they emailed me the monthly balance sheet, the budget, and the financials. I have that on my web. I have that on my email if everybody wants to take a look at it. But to me, there's a big difference as how, how they do it and how we do it. The other thing I happened to pick up when I was there, because it was on the, on the, next to the chair where I was sitting, and I was really impressed by it. And it's, they got Papillion, the big picture, and a report from city of Papillion, Nebraska, to the residents 2013. If you look at this report, you'll see how they operate their financial situation. They operate their city really, really impressive. So, again, you, Mayor, saying about how we should do things better in your team, I would suggest that all of you have an opportunity to look at this brochure because it was, I think, it's really impressive. It really sells Papillion. And they mailed it out to every resident of, of the city. So, maybe there's something you might want to consider doing also. And so, thank you for your time. Oh, no, I have one other thing, too. If, if you, I still believe there should be an audit for the, for the finance department, but not hired by the city. You know, in other words, you have outsiders working now in committees. I would gladly volunteer to find an independent auditor to go over our books. But I think that would, that will help straighten this situation out quite a bit. Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
I'd ask Mr. Sullivan, does the city of Bellevue have an outside audit firm that audits our books on an annual basis?
EKD.
Yes.
Thank you.
You responded. I like to have responded to that, then. You asked, you respond to me. And what I'm saying is that you have an auditor that comes in, you've had the same one for three years, and you hire that auditor, and that auditor does...
Mr. Frederick, he asked me a question. He did not respond back to you, and I responded to him. He is not talking to you when he talks to me.
Well, indirectly, he was, though.
Are there others that would like to speak at this time? Please do so.
Steve Draper. I've signed in earlier. I just want to thank the council for today not rushing through that ordinance, 3778, and giving the, the full process. And I, I did do a spreadsheet comparing what the increases are compared to three years ago. And, and I, unfortunately, on the website, when we do emails to our councilmen, there's no availability to do attachments to that. If there were, I would have included that spreadsheet. But if, if any of the members of the council would like a copy of that spreadsheet, I did. I'd be glad to, to make a copy. And I've, I've compared what, what the increase in the minimums and what the percentage increase in the maximum is for each of those positions on there. And some of them are pretty high. One of them's a forty-six percent increase, and others a fifty-seven percent increase. And, and I know that while, while doing this ordinance doesn't automatically give these people a pay raise, and, but I question why we would put our limits that much higher. And I, that's, and your voting to do the full process gives you the time to research it and the public to give you the input, and I thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak at this time? See none. I'll close the public request to be See none, I'll close the public request to be heard. Item 14, adjournment, Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. Preister, any discussion? Please vote. Thank you and good night. See you August 11th.